Alright, Grand Rising, Grand Arrival, Grand Return. I just wanna make sure my sound is working this time before I um start recording. Alright, the sound is working, let me share my screen. And let me start recording. Alright, Grand Rising, Grand Arrival, Grand Return, peace and blessings to the righteous and the repentant alike. I am Cleopatra Sophia the Bodhi. And in this video, we are going to go over the planetary moon cycle for this month um of this year of two thousand twenty-five. And as a reminder, this is our Jubilee Zulkin and market calendar with the Hebrew feast days. Um, before I get into the meaning of this month, this is my second time recording this video because when I recorded the first time, there was no sound, so. That was fabulous, and so now we're recording it again, and I wanted to make sure there would be sound and we went live, so hopefully there will be no interruptions to the message going out the way that it needs to. So um first, there's been some changes to the calendar, so the benefit of doing this again is that you're going to get the updated calendar. So the very first column is the degree at six AM Pacific daylight time in Mount Rainier, Washington, using the Krishna Murdi calculation, which is a Vedic calculation. And the second column is six AM Eastern Standard Time using the tropical calculation, okay? Then we have the lunar, which is the lunar day cycle of our lunar new year. Then we have the, oh, I still have Day of Creation, it's really the Night of Creation. Um, in groups of um twelve, obviously. Then we have our Zulkin Ken number with groups of thirteen highlighted. Um, I have that down at the bottom, that's called the Tricynic Chromatics. Um, then we have the Zulkin important days, which could be Galactic Portal Days or Vow Days, which we don't have any vow days this month. Um, somewhere I have indicated supermoon, seasonal blue moon, total lunar eclipse, that's probably with the actual moons. Um, then uh in the purple, under the holidays and feast days, Orthodox feast days are in purple, Hebrew feast days are in blue, solar and lunar events are in orange, Zulkin new months are in green, American holidays are in red. The American Nunday is uh the next column on here, this is totally out of order. Um, where it says Nunday, that's the American, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, even under the um the holidays and feast days. The Nunday um important days, which would be the Kalends in the I- in the Nones and the Ides, that's in black, the Zulkin Cycle Nunday is in blue. Uh, the Tricynic Chromatics, as I mentioned, under the Ken number is in pink. Um, and then you have our lunar weeks, one, two, three, and four. That would be under the, where it says lunar and also where it says T moon. Um, it tells you what week number we're in, that correlates with our scale of four, which I haven't made the video for yet. So going backwards, we have our Zulkin Moon, which is one through twenty-eight, our Zulkin Month, which this month is the ten month. Then we have the date, the actual physical calendar date, then we have the day, which indicates the Sabbath. Um, the Nunday Cycle, which is the market cycle and the week for that, um, and then the personal numerology days. So this calendar has had a lot of things added to it, it's probably not in its final form, but it is done, so we'll soon be um digging into each one of these sections. As I've mentioned, we're going to go through the whole two hundred and sixty day cycle together. If that is something that you're interested in, please think about it, please try about it. We are going to um feature a lot of the videos, or at least the paperwork part of it, over on our Patreon. And then obviously I have the videos and more than likely they'll be here too. But I think what I'm gonna do is the people who join the Patreon will get access to the unlisted playlist, so they'll be on that playlist first, and then they'll come over to um the general public. I just think that's gonna be the easiest way to keep track of everything, I don't wanna have to go in and manually add people, um. And so the Patreon is fifteen dollars a month, but like I said, every, most everything is gonna be also available on YouTube. And if that's something that's just still insurmountable for you, please send me an email um and we'll work it out, okay? So I don't want anyone to be priced out of this information, we are gonna go through the whole two hundred and sixty day cycle together. That means you're gonna learn each of the two hundred and sixty uh pieces of um this information and also how to use it, um, and that's something that we'll go over together. Probably in thirteen day increments, just because a thirteen day cycle is actually the jubilee, the Jubilee cycle. Um, that's the one that has the most impact, okay? What else I wanna say about this? Okay, so this month is the planetary moon, okay? So let me read you the energy for the planet. Which, good lord, I hope I can put my hands on it pretty quickly, which we never know. Okay, so I said planetary, right? This is the planetary moon, so this is the tenth, tenth moon out of thirteen. Okay, we're tenth month, the, oh, that's what I did last, I talked about what these energies were, so let me open that up. I'm gonna try and do as many of the things as I remember from the first time. Uh, obviously, that's not gonna be perfect, but you will get the most information, um, the most necessary information and a lot of stuff I remember. Um, without all the distractions, I was very distracted when I made the video earlier. So um, this is the planetary moon, that's the first column, um, I mean, that's a, you can't see this one. Um, the air Kadeshii, that's, that's related to is Kayal, K A Y A L. Kayal is the fountains, and the fountains speak the language of eternity. Kayal means life of God, it's repentance for thoughts and actions infringing on visions. It's the body of pureness of God, it's the guardian of those who keep the Sabbath, it's the elder of those who love repentance. It's the master of pleasant memories and grandparents, it's the teacher of wisdom, it's the herald of cleanliness. It's the enemy of those who divide and the unfaithful. Kayal is in the West, it's the first entity in the West, which is fire and water. And Kayal is on the Council of Elda, if you're familiar with the Books of Remembrance. Now, Kayal means fountains, but I don't think it means fountains of water. Having done a little bit of research on this, I'm pretty fairly certain that it means fountains of fire. So that's what we're talking about here, it's related to Sagittarius, the tree is the elder tree. Um, which I have to pull up the information for that, that's the Celtic astrology. It's related to Asher, it's also related to the rooster, it's related to the solar plexus chakra. So the frequency for that is six hundred and seven point five hertz. It's related to Nehemiah five and three, it's related to um the type of wickedness is the evil eye and the type of forgiveness is forgiving iniquity, okay? So, well, let me go, let's talk about what the elder tree in the Celtic astrology is, because we are going to get into this more in-depth, obviously, because the Celtic astrology is relevant. But I did do this before, so I had to look everything up, so I saved it, so that's gonna save us a little bit of time here. So the symbol for the elder tree is a black horse, the ruling planet is Saturn. Uh, it represents death, rebirth, and transformation, okay? Um, the elder tree is also known as the seeker. And it says freedom-loving and sometimes appear to be a bit wild to the other signs of the zodiac. In younger years, you may have lived life in a fast lane, often identified as a thrill seeker. In actuality, you are deeply thoughtful and philosophical bent. You also tend to be considerate and genuinely uh strive to be helpful. The elder tree links life and death with the wheel of the year and represents oh god, closure and completion, well, not exactly. The elder tree grow, well, it's completion of the first ten, the first ten aren't a group together, technically. Um, when you look at the, the cycle, and then the second, the last three aren't a group together, so that's technically true. Um, the elder tree regrows damaged branches easily and can root from any part of itself. For this reason, as the final tree in the wheel of the year, it represents the joining point where life and death meet. Traditionally, witches could transform themselves into elder trees, and so it is unlucky to cut them down. So that's the um Celtic um tree that's affiliated with this particular month. Um, this particular twenty-eight day cycle. What else are we gonna talk about? Um, Nehemiah five and three, Nehemiah five and three is the famine that's related to um this uh month. And so I'm not gonna read the whole thing this time, but I do suggest you go read it. What happened in Nehemiah five and three is that basically there's a famine in the land. And the Israelites who have come from Babylon to rebuild Jerusalem um are hungry. And so they sold their houses, they sold their fields, they sold their vineyards, they sold their oil, they sold their wine. And then they started selling their children, and Nehemiah found out what the elites were doing, because who were they selling them to? They were selling them to the elites, and so Nehemiah found out what was going on. Now Nehemiah was not a priest, he was not a king, he was not anybody, he was just a layman who was appointed um by maybe Cyrus, I can't remember, Darius, one of them. He was appointed by whoever um as a governor to oversee the rebuilding of Jerusalem. So when he finds this out, he's very troubled, so he gets a great number of the Israelites together and they go to these Jews, that's what he says in the Bible, he calls them Jews. They go to, now mind you, if they're Israelites, why didn't he call them Israelites? Why did he call them Jews and not Israelites? So anyhow, he goes to these group of people and he tells them um basically, they're going to give back everything that they stolen, they're gonna give back their children, they're gonna give back their wine, they're gonna give back their oil, they're gonna give back their vineyards, they're gonna give back their houses, they're gonna give back everything plus a tenth. That's what it says, a tenth, so I was, I, and, and these Jews said, okay, boss, whatever you say, right? So then Nehemiah goes to the priest and he's like, you're going to oversee this and make sure they do right by these people. And the priest say, okay, boss, whatever you say. Now, why would a group of elites like Elon Musk and a group of priests like the haughty Levites, we know, like a, a teedy snake in the grass? Why would you go to them and tell them, hey, you're gonna do this, and then they just do it? Well, we don't have a divin- a definitive answer, but so far, this is my working answer. My working answer is that there is a spirit over the calendar. And these people violated the terms of the calendar, and therefore, they got their hind parts handed to them by the, this very specific entity, and the name of this entity is Vogoya. And we're gonna have another video about Vogoya, but I just wanna point that out, that I do believe that it was Vogoya that showed up. Um, the entity Vogoya showed up and, and scared the bejesus out of these people, and they decided to go along without um anymore um lip, okay? So they did not change willingly, they changed because they were forced, and something forced them, and I think that's some is Vogoya. So as you'll notice about this calendar month, um, this is the very first month. This is the very first point where the degree in the um in Mount Rainier, which is Mount Olympus, for the Olympians is in Libra and also um American Troy is what I call it, we're also in Libra season, so now we're all underground. So up to this point, up to this particular cycle, we were not all underground. Now we are all underground together, which is very, very good, and I think it's interesting that this month starts with zero degrees of Libra on the first day of this calendar month in um Mount Olympus, so I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, I think that's unbelievable. Um, I also still like, and flabbergasted that the first day of the month is also the first day of the week, and that the Sabbath line up with this perfectly. Um, I know I say that all the time, but it's still, uh, it never ceases to amaze me. Now, um, something else I wanna mention about this month is that on the numerology part, we have four eleven days, okay? Now, this last set of four days right here, whenever you see this highlighted on the calendar, that means it's gonna go in order, so one, not two, but eleven, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then it'll go one through nine. So we had a similar time like this in August with, and, and into September, where it went in order like this, we have another one of these organizational um I would call them organizational checkpoint days, where all of the numerology energy is in sync, okay? What else I wanna mention about this? Um, but these other three eleven days are very low energetic points, that's what I was gonna say. There's nothing, um, we're gonna go over each day, but I'm just saying this in advance, cuz I thought it was important. There's nothing going on, on these eleven days as far as the astrology is concerned, like nothing big. Um, there is something on this last one, so I would say in general, eleven days are days when the planets are not gonna be doing a whole lot, so when I say the numerology, it must be like the planetary numerology. Um, and which would make sense, but yeah, the planets don't do a whole lot on these eleven days, because if you remember, our um scale of eleven is a scale of destruction. So they don't too much get involved on those days, except for this one, this happens to be also an American holiday, and therefore, it kinda has to get involved, okay? So, um, let me point out the, the Galactic Portal Days, cuz I may forget those as I go through the cycle. We have four Galactic Portal Days in this Zulkin month. Um, the very first one is on the nineteenth and um and Mount Olympus, it'll be two degrees of Libra, American Troy will be twenty-six degrees of Libra, and the Zulkin number for that is two eighteen. Um, the very next portal day is six degrees of Libra in Mount Olympus, zero degrees of Scorpio in American Troy, and the um Ken number is two hundred and twenty-two. Then we have a big, long, huh, empty period for Galactic Portal Days. Um, at twenty-three degrees of Libra in Mount Olympus and seventeen degrees of Scorpio in American Troy, we have um two thirty-nine, our Zulkin number, uh, Ken number, two thirty-nine, that's a portal day. And then twenty-five degrees of Libra in uh Mount Olympus, nineteen degrees of Scorpio in American Troy. We have our, our last Galactic Portal Day of the month, that is two hundred and forty-one Ken number, okay? So those are our four Galactic Portal Days this month, we have no, um, not Ken. We have no vow days this month, however, every first of the Zulkin month and also first of the American calendar month are days that you can make vows. So I'm suggesting, if you did make a vow uh with us on the vow day, make your vow to the Creator to have access to Vogoya, okay? You need Vogoya, and Vogoya needs you, so that's the energy that I will be making a vow to tomorrow. Now, because this month has to do with the evil eye, please, please, make sure you wear your evil eye jewelry this month, keep you an evil eye on you. I don't know why, like I'm, this is, I just finished this calendar in the last twenty-eight day cycle. Please, keep you an evil eye on you, that is the energy that is going to be heightened this month, you know? So you need to keep an evil eye on you, okay? Um, a necklace, a bracelet, a key, a something, okay? Keep you an evil eye on you, okay? Um, if you're still doing your um greens and um what is that stuff called? Uh, um, black eyed peas and greens? You can go ahead and do that tomorrow as well, whatever you do to bring abundance into your life. Um, you'll do that on the first as well, okay? I did forget to mention that last time, um, is there anything else? Like I mentioned, these thirteen day cycles are very, very important, so before we do the new cycle, probably this, this one right here, I'll probably do a video every day going over the energy of the thirteen day cycle, just because that needs to be broke out separately anyway. It goes with everything else, but it's so much on this calendar, this is the part that matters the most, this thirteen day Ken cycle, okay? So let's get started by talking about the astrology. Alright, so, okay. All month, we have this lingering energy of Pluto, Trine, Sedna, which is conjunct Uranus, okay? That energy is an energy that's playing out all month. So um, I'm gonna refer to this in days instead of by degrees, because I've already established the degrees. Now, this month, we do not have any doubles, and we do not have any missing degrees. Every day hits a new and unique degree, okay? And this is the first month that's like this since um basically February, because af- in March, when we started the new year, that's when the days started doubling and stuff. So this'll be the first time since um since all the way back at the beginning of the year, Aries season, that we will have days that just flow. And so um you should notice a difference in, in that too, as you're poking around in the energy, okay? So tomorrow, ten seventeen, two thousand twenty-five, um, we have the sun opposite Chiron, and we also have the north node and the south node, trine and sextile Mars at seven degrees of Scorpio. The fact that we're starting our, our month with the sun opposite Chiron, Chiron is gonna be a very important energy this month, so is the sun, sun's gonna be very, very important in, in this energy, but um, the fact that we have sun opposite Chiron, that's gonna be the heaviest energy of the month. A lot of people are feeling this energy, but they don't know what it is, because the sun is like your outer self, and your Chiron is your wounds. So your wounds are standing juxtaposed to your sun, which is who you really are. And um if you have not done the healing, then this could feel like you fighting yourself to be yourself. But if you've done the work, then this is basically you and your Chiron, you know, understanding each other, like I know I've been wounded, but I'm not my wounds, and Chiron's saying, I know that, I know who you are and you are not your wounds, you know what I mean? That kind of energy. Also, this whole south node, north node, and Mars situation, these are also very, very active this month. I know people are thinking, um, maybe some of the astro, I don't know, I haven't been watching any astrologers, because I just can't, like, I just can't. Um, so I don't know if they've been telling people that things are suddenly about to get easier, or the energy is gonna let up, but sun opposite Chiron for the first day, and um the north node and the south node, trine and sextile Mars is also not energy that screams like getting easier, huh, in my opinion, so. Um, don't let these people lie to you, okay? So then, like I mentioned, on the eighteenth, we have an empty day, because it's an eleven day. Um, so that also means, I would highly suggest you don't take on new things on eleven days, because eleven days are days of destruction. So you are asking for the destruction, just, and look, one is a Sa- one is a Saturday, one is a Sunday, and one is a Monday, the Monday one is probably the one to really watch out for, but, oh my gosh, I'd take a sip. Alright, let's keep moving. So on the nineteenth, on the nineteenth, we have Venus square Cubito. And we also have the north node and a south node square, I mean, trine and sextile Mercury. And I would like, also like to point out that Mercury is conjunct Mars for three days. Now, I think today's, uh, this day, the nineteenth, is the first day, now what does that even mean? Mercury usually moves really fast, and Mars usually moves really slow. Um, so Mars is gonna be moving a degree a day, which it usually doesn't. And Mercury's gonna be moving a degree a day, which it normally doesn't either, it usually work, moves like a degree and a half a day. Um, this is because Mercury is getting ready to go retrograde, it's gonna retrograde in Sagittarius. So that's why it's slowing down, and Mars seems to be speeding up, and somewhere around like halfway through its cycle, it does start to speed up. Um, and then it'll kinda slow down again, so these are gonna be a very, very important few days, the nineteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-first, okay? So on the twentieth, you have Mercury, Trine, I mean, Mercury conjunct Mars, it started the day before, and nineteen degrees of Scorpio, so on the nineteenth, it's at eighteen degrees of Scorpio, on the twentieth, it's at nineteen degrees of Scorpio, and on the twenty-first, it's at twenty degrees of Scorpio. And then Mercury starts to um pick up, which again, very, very rare, very rare. Also, on the twentieth, you have Lilith, Trine, and Sextile, the north node and south node, so li- the black moon Lilith is like our deepest desires and our inner, you know, woman power and all of that, and it's meeting up with the north node and the south node, now mind you, the north node and the south node just did trine to Mars, then it did a, a trine sextile to Mars, then it did a trine sextile to Mercury, now it's doing a trine sextile to Lilith. Then it's gonna do a square to Vesta, so um the north node and the south node energy is really, really being activated over this month, and, and the fact that it's so early in the month means it's probably gonna be quite significant. So we have our Libra new moon, now also, let me mention about the Libra new moon. We are now in reversal energy, so before, we would have the full moon and then the new moon. Now we have the new moon and then the full moon, so as you can see, we have the Libra new moon, and then we have the Taurus full moon. So before, it would have been the Taurus um full moon would have been before the Libra new moon. But, or actually, it really would have been opposite on the beginning, so the Libra new moon would have been before the Aries full moon. But now, the Libra new, we had, since we had that double Virgo um full moons, I mean, um, new moons uh in the last couple months, we had a Virgo new moon at zero degrees, and we had another Virgo new moon at twenty-nine degrees. Now, we have the, the reversal is basically cemented in, I think when we had the Aries full moon, that was still kinda cementing in our um our lunar new year, but now that we have the Libra new moon, which should have, like I said, occurred before the Aries full moon, this is when the reversal really starts to take place. Um, and I can already feel it um for sure, for sure. So on the twenty-second, we have Jupiter, Trine, Lilith, and inconjunct Chiron. And usually I don't even mention inconjuncts, because they're not like really like that important, but because it's Lilith, and Lilith just had this trine and sextile with a north node and a south node, and Chiron was opposite the sun on the first day of the month, this seemed to be a very significant um transit. Also Jupiter is going to be going retrograde. Also, Jupiter is going to be going retrograde later on in the month, um, right before the end of the month, actually. And so um, Jupiter is gonna be meeting with basically all of the major planets. To gather all of this information before it goes into this retrograde, okay? I'll just mention when we get down there. So on the twenty third of October, that is our zulkin nones, which is the seven days into the cycle. So this is why you have to make a vow on the first day of the cycle. Because by the seventh day of the cycle, that's when you should start to see the answer show up. And by the fourteenth day of the cycle, you should have your answer, okay? So on the zulkin nones, we have a yod, which is, the sun is gonna be at zero degrees of Scorpio, so that's not. Well, the next day will be the first day of our Scorpio season, and it's just crazy that that's a Sabbath, so um, more craziness. Then you have Uranus um, conjunct Sedna and sextile Neptune. And this energy also goes on for quite a while. Um, but that um, sextile is what makes the base of the yod and it's pointing at the sun. Now, mind you, the sun had that opposition with, with Chiron. And so basically, this is like really empowering the sun to do what's necessary. And of course, that would be necessary because now we're in the darkness. We're in the darkness of the year, we're, we're going deeper into the darkness. The sun can't be scared of its shadow now, because the sun has to lead us through the darkness of this part of the year. So um, this makes sense in the, in the planetary story. So on the twenty fourth of October, we have the moon opposite Uranus and Sedna. Which happens once a month, right? We have Jupiter trine Mercury and we have the sun square Pluto. So again, these Jupiter, Mercury, sun, um, Pluto energies are just playing out over and over and over again. In major ways this month, okay? On the twenty fifth of um. October, we have Lilith opposite Uranus and Sedna. So every, a lot of entities are either doing opposites, sextiles with Uranus and Sedna, very important. And, and this is why I mentioned Lilith was so important, because Lilith is really, really like picking up like for real now. Like for real. Alright, so our next placement on the, let me try and read that day. On the twenty seventh, ten twenty seven, um, we have Jupiter trine Mercury. On ten twenty eight, we have Jupiter trine Mars, and then on ten twenty nine, we have Mercury trine Neptune. So Jupiter is heavily activated. Here's another major Neptune um, engagement, this time with Mercury. So it's very, very energetic um, in these, the Jupiter arena. And because Jupiter is in Cancer, um, we haven't really got into it again yet, but Jupiter has, oh yeah, Jupiter trine Mars. Mars, oof, Mars went retrograde in Cancer for the longest time ever. It was almost six months, it was in and out of Cancer. And so Jupiter is in Cancer, getting ready to go retrograde. So Mars is collecting a lot of in- information from the planets to give to Jupiter before it does this retrograde bid. And um, Jupiter is also gathering information from as many of the planets it can before it goes into retrograde. And that's the, the way the energy is playing out. Then you have the zulkin eyes, that's on the thirtieth of October, you have Uranus and Sedna um, opposite Mercury. So this is another start of, of another cycle. And Mercury is, this is a once a year restart too. So you have like major restarts this month. At the very beginning of the month, you have the sun opposite Chiron, and by the eyes, you have Uranus and Sedna opposite Mercury. Um, that seems pretty significant to me, okay, with a yod in the middle, very significant. Um, Mercury will be at zero degrees of Sagittarius. Then with zero, the next day on um, Halloween, Mercury is gonna be sextile Pluto. So definitely death and rebirth and knowledge and stuff like that. So I wouldn't be worried about trick or treating or anything, it's not like, I wouldn't be worried about it. I would take the kids, let them have fun and, and be happy, okay? Also, that's the first day of the week, the thirty first is, so for sure. The next day is the first of November, that is our American Calends, which is always on the first of the month. Um, it's also a nine-nine day, so I know, ooh, we have a nine-nine portal, like this is another nine-nine day. Because um, it's a personal nine day with the numerology. And also, it's the nine degrees Scorpi- Scorpio sun world point. And I haven't made a video about this yet, but um, there's four energetic world points and they get closer and closer together. The next one after this nine degrees Scorpio sun is um. Zero degrees of. Capricorn. The other one, another one, I think is eighteen degree, we talked about it in August and Leo season. I think it's eighteen degrees of Leo. And then the first one of the energetic year is May eighteenth, which I do believe is um. Twenty seven, twenty-six degrees or something like that of um. Taurus. So I'll do a video talking about that, because since we have it coming up this month, I need to explain it. Um, also on that day, we have Lilith trine Neptune and Jupiter square Chiron. So after Jupiter squares off with the sun, I mean, Chiron squares off with the sun, Chiron is gonna have to square off with Jupiter. So this is why, again, any problems you have, you wanna try to wrap them up. It, the best way you can before we get into um, too much of this Chiron energy. Alright, so on the second of November, we have Jupiter square Chiron still. Um, but this time, Chiron is opposite Venus. So now you have, okay, I mean, this is a start of a lot of cycles. Now you have a new Venus Chiron cycle, which it only happens once a year. So we have the sun opposite Chiron happening this month. We have um. Venus opposite Chiron, that's this month, and there's one more. I thought there was one more, but two is a lot. Oh, it's all these Uranus and Sedna, um, so, so, okay. Chiron is starting a new cycle with the sun and Venus. Uranus and Sedna is starting a new cycle with Mercury. Um, is that the only one? It's starting a new cycle with Mercury. So that's like um, most of the personal planets. Um, oh, I'm tripping. Mercury is starting a new cycle with Sedna, Black Moon Lilith is starting a new cycle with Uranus and Sedna. And the moon is starting a new cycle with Uranus and Sedna. Now, the moon, like I said, happens every month, but Lilith does not happen every month. Um, Lilith's cycle, I think, is eighteen months, so it's more like the nodes. So, and a lot of new cycles beginning. With, and Uranus is like the shocking all factor, but Sedna is our deepest fears, our deepest desires, our unconscious mind. So our unconscious mind is getting a lot of resets and so are our wounds. So this is a very reset, reset month. Like, if I wanted to know when the, when the energy was gonna reset, it's gonna be this month. But it's not, I don't necessarily think it's gonna be easy, I just think it's gonna be a reset, okay? So again, on the third, that's not a good day to do anything. On the fourth, um, we don't have any energy uh, of November, we don't have a lot of energy either. The next energetic day, so basically, that downtime is for you to get prepared for this Taurus full moon, which it is a super moon. And it's the American nones, which for this month is a short, these are, this is not a full month, this is a, I mean, it's a full month. Um, in the Romans, they call it a pregnant month or a, a non-pregnant month, so this is not a pregnant month. So it's a short time between the Calends and the nones, okay? So the ne- the day after that, which is also, I mean, this whole thing is insane. Eleven-six, which is a Sabbath. Um, that is sixty days from the start of the lunar new year. So as I mentioned, at the time of the lunar new year, or maybe I didn't, I don't remember now. But I was talking about the three worms, okay? And so what happens is sixty days after the start of the new year, these three worms go to the Creator. Or whoever to report on our behavior. So if you haven't done with your karma and like, taken any of my suggestions up to this point. You might wanna do it now, because this sixty days is running out on November the sixth. And it's crazy that it's a Sabbath, right? Because again, you can't make this stuff up. So on that day, um, that's when the, the worms are gonna go and report on you. And so if you've done a bunch of wickedness, that is when the report is gonna be made. And it's not gonna be anyone able to LARP in anybody else's energy. Everybody is synced to the same timeline now, therefore, you are gonna have to take responsibility for your stuff. Black women, black people, black nobody is taking responsibility for all or nothing. Everybody is responsible for their own energy, period, and Virgoia is gonna make sure that happens. So there's no, the, the, there's no more running out the clock, the clock has been synchronized. We wound the clock up, okay, so you can't run anymore. So I highly suggest to these people who are waiting around, don't be like the elites with Nehemiah. And wait for Virgoia to come and scare the bejesus out of you. Just come to us, we'll perhaps pray for you if you um, give us back everything that you sold. And we're not really asking, it's just like good advice to tell you, that's what you should do. Just read Nehemiah five and three for yourself, I don't really have to say anything else. So that's the day after our Taurus full moon, and Taurus has to deal with physical abundance and fright and Venus and all of that. I mean, these people, they don't even know how much trouble that they're in, honestly. Um, and I've told them, so there's nothing really left to say. Alright, so on the seventh of um, November, you have the sun trine. And now you have the sun trine and sextile, the north node and the south node. So that's another, like, there's a lot of north node, south node energies. Getting flo- getting energy flow- flowed, huh, flowed. Um, sewed into them. And that's because, again, this month started with the sun opposite Chiron. The wounds must be held in the north node and the south node while they're getting extra attention so that they can be healed. So a lot of healing should be taking place during this particular twenty-eight day cycle, okay? On the eighth of November, um, that's another eight-eight day, because it's the eighth of November and it's an eight market day. So um, you have Uranus entering, which has now entered Taurus, trine Neptune. And you have Venus square Pluto, so we had the Pluto's square the sun. Now Venus is square the sun, so Venus and the sun are tracking together very closely this month. And that's something to keep in mind, because um, the sun. Um, or there's an image of Venus with child, that basically looks like Mother Mary with Jesus the baby. So you can see that the sun is getting it first and then Venus comes in and gets it next. So in this case, Mother Mary is the sun, Venus is the baby Jesus. And so um, this is a very interesting story that's playing out um, with the sun and Venus and, and what's happening with the sun. And then turning around and seeing what's happening with Venus. Um, so again, it's like a midwife birthing this new energy. On the ninth, which is another, it's a nine-nine-nine day, eleven-nine. It's a nine market day and it's a nine personal day. So that eight-eight day is pretty powerful, but this nine-nine-nine jackpot, okay? So you have the moon trine Lilith on this day. So again, the moon has been, you know, hitting up a lot of energies, Lilith has been hitting up a lot of energies. Now they're gonna have a conversation and compare notes, okay? The next day is a one day, but there's also no big energetic things going on. Um, that is the tenth of November. And then on the eleventh of November, um, which is eleven-eleven-eleven. Yikes, that is Veterans Day, and you have on that day Lilith um, sextile Cubito. Now Cubito, we've mentioned from time to time, it is like the representation of Jesus, is literally Venus's baby. Um, it's Cubito. So now you have that energy flowing to Lilith, which is our deep-seated, repressed feminine or whatever energy. Um, misunderstood feminine energy and the fact that's happening on an eleven-eleven-eleven day. Uh, eleven-eleven-eleven day is probably not a good day to do too much anything. I can see why they needed to make that a federal holiday, because people working and doing stuff on this day. Is just never gonna be a good look, it's always gonna be huge problems. So if you can, don't work that day, okay? I don't, I just, and now that I know what eleven days mean, uh, personal with the numerology. I will never plan anything important on the eleven day. I try, I was supposed to do something on Saturday, like I've basically canceled most of my plans. Um, it wasn't on purpose, I didn't even know this until I started doing this earlier. But one by one, plans just kept fall- started falling away and I was like, yeah, we don't need to be doing nothing. We got to learn how to really work with this energy, okay? Um, also, was, I said, one of these Sabbaths I was gonna take seriously. I was really important. Oh, the Sabbath that happens on the day after the Taurus full moon, I would take that Sabbath really seriously. Like that's, because that's the day the worms go to report on you. So be respectful of these worms, let them do their job, take that Sabbath really seriously, sit home, you know? Don't try to prepare your food the day before, whatever you're supposed to do on Sabbath, whatever you feel called to do on Sabbath. You wanna make sure you plan ahead to do it on that particular day. Could mean taking the day off, I don't know, everybody's lives are different, but I'mma highly suggest that you know that you're not gonna. Nothing good is gonna come out of that, that particular Sabbath. That's gonna be like an eleven day on steroids, which is crazy, because it's the twenty-six week. And it's the, it's a five personal day and six and five is eleven. You've got six-two, six-five. And you got a six-two. Two-thirty-six. Five and six is eleven. That, haha, you got six-two, six-two, you got eleven, this, this, this. I'm telling you, this Sabbath, eleven-six, take that one seriously, honey, okay? Alright, so on the twelfth of Oc- of November, I'm sorry. Um, now, we've already entered this day of back-to-back energy, where we go through the one through eight cycle and then the one through nine cycle. So this is a synchronizing week that we're, a time period that we're entering in, but it's only the last four days of this month. Of this um, zulkin month, so that's the twelfth of November. You have the Jupiter, you have Jupiter going retrograde at twenty-five degrees and nine minutes of Cancer. Now, is that the last Sabbath? Okay, so that day, the, the sixth of November, is the last Sabbath? It's a Sabbath before Jupiter goes retrograde. Jupiter will be retrograde at six AM, so it's the last Sabbath before Jupiter goes retrograde. So again, I'mma highly suggest you take that Sabbath on November the sixth very seriously. And so for the last day of this month, that's November the thirteenth, you have the moon square Mars, you have the moon trine Venus. And you have Venus, I mean, trine, sextile Venus, and you have Venus sextile Cubito. So Venus, after Cubito having this conversation with Lilith. Now you have the moon having a conversation with Venus, Venus having a conversation with Cubito. The moon is square Mars, so you got Venus, Mars, Cubito, moon. That's gonna be a very, very energetic into the month. It's going out with a bang, haha, at least that's what it seems like to me. So again, I'll just like summarize. We have a new moon, we have a lunar reversal, so now we have new moons in the lower half of the chart before the full moon and that top half of the chart. So we have our Libra new moon on ten twenty-one. We have our Taurus full moon on eleven-five. Um, we have the sixty days from the start of the lunar year. That is when these worms come and do their, take their report up to the Creator. It is also a Sabbath, that's on November the sixth. I just highly suggest you take that Sabbath very, very seriously. Um, and not, um, you know, and just be respectful of that energy and the job that they have to do. We have Jupiter going retrograde towards the, basically, right before the last day of the month, that's on the twelfth of November. That's gonna be a very, very important energetic day. Um, and we have our nine degrees Scorpio sun world point on the first of November. Um, and so that's gonna be very. Um, and so that's gonna be a very important day too. We don't have a lot of data on the sun world point, on these world points yet, except to say that they are very important. And they bring in a little extra kick to the whole cycle. So um what else I have to say? I will say this, again, we're gonna be going through the whole two hundred and sixty day of the Zulcan. And these things, I never even go through the all of the details with the Zulcan cycle because it's way too complicated and its calendar is already complicated enough. And so instead of trying to make everything super complicated and putting it all together, I just separated it out and we're going over it piece by piece. So if you follow us here on the channel, you will get all the information. Um, but like I said, for the documents and all that stuff, I'mma have to put that over on Patreon because I can't upload documents. And you can't do screenshots of a document that's over a hundred and fifty pages, that doesn't make sense. So I'm gonna have to just put that document over on Patreon, but most of the other stuff is gonna be here for you to access. But it's just not gonna make sense without the document, so um just cuz, and it's it's really not about how much it costs. It's like, please, you're gonna have to go through the whole cycle, you don't wanna pick this up and then put it down. It's really, really important to do the whole thing. And so I just want people to be dedicated to completing the whole two hundred and sixty days. It is a very, very long cycle, but nine times out of ten, it's just gonna be once every thirteen days where I might do a talk or something. And then we're gonna go monitor these thirteen days and see how they play out. Thirteen is the Jubilee number, it is the signi- signific- significator of the Jubilee cycle. And so that's why we have to really focus in on getting a handle on this thirteen day cycle. So again, if that's something you think you might be interested in, um just get your mind right and make sure you're going to be able to devote yourself to the whole two hundred and sixty day cycle, okay? So as always, if anybody have any questions or anything, feel free to um leave comments, send me an email. Um, monitor, again, monitor how these energies show up. Keep notes, keep copious notes, keep good records on how these things show up. Because all those are data points that's gonna help you explain to your family and friends why this works. Because I can't explain to everybody, these family and friends, why this works. Um, you're gonna have to be your own witness, your own apostle, so you definitely want to just keep your notes, okay? So I think that's it for this calendar, thank you so much for joining me. Shalom, peace and blessings, and we will see you in the next video for sure. Um, when the calendar month starts on November the first.